Live on our website. Standby for Facebook. Okay, we're live on our channels.
Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate it. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the October 27th Galton City Council Committee Meeting. At this time, before we start the meeting, I need to read this from the, about electronic meeting pursuant to the Governor's release, Executive Orders Number 1634 and 51 and 60, and the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The October 27th Galton City Council Meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting will be live streamed to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the council. If you want to join us on Zoom, there's a link on the screen, or you can dial in at 1-470-250-9358, or 470-381-2552, and enter the webinar that you see there on the screen, number 870-2302-4328. Do I hear motion to approve this electronic meeting?
Motion approved.
Motion has been made by Councilman Alexander, seconded by Councilwoman Love. Ms. Kitter, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Eyes, Zero Nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitter. This time, if you'll call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. There's no minutes for approval. At this time, we're going to go to public recognition. If anybody here in the public that would like to speak, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hinchell for a minute and let him explain how this works.
Very good, sir. If you're on your computer or your Zoom app, please use the raise your hand function. If you're on the computer, just mouse over the bottom of your screen, and you'll see that button to raise your hand. We've got a few people who've called in. In order to raise your hand there, you'll do star nine. That'll raise your hand to be called, and then you'll hit star six to unmute yourself. I will allow you to talk if you raise your hand, and then you'll have to unmute yourself to get going.
I want to remind all the callers that you have five minutes to speak, so please keep your comments to five minutes.
And just looking over our names, just making sure anyone wants to speak. And I don't see anyone that's raised their hand.
Thank you, Jeff. I'll declare public recognition closed. Mayor's comments.
Oh, I'm unmuted. I'm sorry. I don't have anything except that Halloween is happening this weekend. We've had lots of questions about is Galton cancelling, or are they not? And Halloween is not a government sanctioned event, and so some people will trick or treat, some people will celebrate at home, some people will not celebrate at all. I would just encourage everyone to use caution, be considerate of those around you, wear masks, be, find a safe way to hand out candy, and everyone stay healthy and safe and enjoy the holiday, or enjoy Halloween. I don't think it's technically a holiday.
Just be considerate of others.
Be considerate of others, and what their sensitivities may be surrounding this, and just give everyone their space and follow what they need you to do to help them feel safe. And we want to keep everyone as healthy as we can, because as you know, the COVID numbers are continuing to go up. We're in this for the long haul. We have to find a way to protect ourselves, protect our loved ones, and endure the long haul, a long haul that is ahead of us. I think I'd also add since I'm talking about being considerate of others, we've got an election next week, actually happens on the night of the city council meeting. And let's be considerate of our neighbors and realize that not everyone shares the same views that we do, but we can still be good neighbors and disagree and love each other. So I hope everyone will do that. And thanks, as always, to our department heads and our employees for continuing to work through this difficult time, because it's gone on longer than we anticipated, but we can do this, and we will get to the other side, and we will be better and stronger. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's move right into the agenda. Item number one, Mr. Bill McCord.
Hey, before Bill gets started, Bill, you there?
Craig, go ahead.
Bill.
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, I was just going to say, I'd like to make a motion we defer this, and the reason is, is because I've talked to Bill a couple of times this week. I've sent him some information, and he's looking over that, and what he's going to do is he's going to get the information together, put together some more information, and get it to us before our next committee meeting in a couple of weeks, and y'all just pack it. And I'd like for y'all to look over everything that we've done. It's stuff I've done and stuff, especially from some of the citizens that have kind of put together too. And if that's okay with everybody, I'd like to make a motion that we defer.
Second.
Motion has been made, probably second. Ms. Kitter will call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fann.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven Eyes, Zero Nays.
Thank you, Ms. Kitter. Item number two, Mr. Bill McCord.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen. Make sure I hit the right buttons here. Okay, can, does everyone see that?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, great.
Yes.
Okay, this was an item that we presented two weeks ago at a county, city council meeting, or council committee meeting. And it was requested by the owners of property at Greensboro Village to change the zoning on a 47-acre parcel of land. And this is kind of an aerial photograph that shows where this is located. It's the southerly portion of the area highlighted here on the aerial map here off of Greenlee Boulevard, just north of Nashville Pike. This is kind of a sketch of a legal description that shows the 47 and a half acres. It is wedged between Greenlee Boulevard and the Volunteer State Community College Campus, east of the Edison Apartments on the west side of Volunteer State Community College Campus. Right now, a portion of the property that's owned by the applicant is already approved for a specific area plan for transit-ready development. This is a page excerpt from that plan, which indicates the type of development pattern you'll see here in a 3D demonstration. It shows how an intense urbanized type of development could be fabricated in this area, including multi-story buildings with multiple uses, primarily residential uses, commercial uses, office uses, things of that sort. But the property that they're asking for rezoning is shown down in the center top portion of the picture, and it was approved in 2007 initially as a large-scale shopping center with big box retail. This next slide shows, is a slide that was put together at the time the Edison Apartments were being considered for moving their density from the south side of Nashville Pike to the north side of Nashville Pike. And the area in yellow is the site of the Edison Apartments that's there now. And directly to the east there where I have my cursor is the big box, I call it the big box shopping centers, the subject property right now. So they envisioned a typical shopping center, and I think I mentioned this, similar to Glenbrook over in Andersonville. Over a million square feet was approved as part of that zoning. What the applicant wants to do now, they already have vested rights and approval of zoning and a master plan for this northerly portion of the property up on the north end of Greenlee Boulevard adjacent to the railroad tracks. They want to simply extend and apply that same development pattern type, this village center, to this 47 acres. It's just to the south and adjacent to this property that I described earlier. This is the village center form-based type code that they're promoting, and then they'd like to be able to consider to build. This indicates some multi-story buildings that would accommodate, again, those mixture of uses that I described earlier. The Boulevard, which is, in this case, we only have one Boulevard, which is Greenlee Boulevard. They envision as tall as some, the maximum building height along the Boulevard would be eight stories. But keep in mind that this area here contains very little properties that are actually adjacent and eligible for development, because the bulk of the property is adjacent to a creek and drainageway, so that area would be left. So all this area in green would be developed as open space or retained as open space, and include linear parks and things of that sort. So, but the rest of it would be part of the village center that's shown in the brown coloring here, and a typical grid-type street pattern that would connect to all state college campus potentially. Other parts of development could include four-story buildings on the interior of those, and this shows how that would be set up. So the higher-level street, the taller the buildings, the lower-level street, the shorter buildings, including as small as one-story buildings, typical homes and townhome structures. So you have a couple of renderings on this slide that show you what those might look like once they're developed. This is an architectural design standard that would be applied to the village center. So you can see these multi-story condominiums or multifamily, or even possibly apartments, but multifamily is what it's being called. And there are various types of designs that you see there, typical of an urban transit-oriented development. Again, here's some with porches, in these cases, two and three-story buildings with stoops in some cases. And on the major roads, you might have, on the corner lots, you would have some taller, more bulky massed buildings and smaller buildings on the interiors. So those are some samples. Including your agenda package is also a listing of permissible uses within the various types of overlay areas, including the village center, which is shown in the darker brown, the village, which is not part of this zoning request, but is part of the existing in the center and so forth. So there are a lot of formidable uses in that district. They do have a phasing plan. The existing area is, would be in phase one, and then phase two would be the village edge that's already has the current zoning. And the Greensboro North, which is subject to rezoning, is in phase three, shown as phase three. Again, this is a sketch of the area that they would like to, again, it's oriented on transit, and it has, is a walkable distance, most of it is considered walkable distance to the transit hub that would be developed years into the future as the development matures. This is a slide that shows the open space areas that would be developed or retained within that specific area plan. So the planning commission did review this, and as I mentioned before, had recommended approval. The applicant is attending tonight's meeting and would also like to speak, and it might have a presentation of the.
Hey, Bill.
So applicant here?
Bill.
Yes, April Anderson, representing Loos Design, here.
Hang on, hang on one second, April, for me. Craig, you need something first?
I was going to ask Bill a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Bill.
Yes.
It's Bill. Oh, question. If we do approve this, and say, you know, it's, we approve it, it gets done. Does it come back to the city council before anything's developed or anything like that?
Well, there's been a little bit of development. The new street that connects Little Drive and St. Blaze was built over and connects into the intersection of Enterprise Drive and Greenlee Boulevard. So that little part's been constructed. That's this little loop area right in here. So that's been built, and then the park and ride line has been.
Now, did you, did you hear what I asked?
I think I did, and.
No, I said, does, I mean, if we do approve it, does it have to come back to us?
Not unless they amend the preliminary master development plan.
Okay, that's it.
All of these will go for a planning commission review for a final master development plan.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
Okay, now, April.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I just want to build on what Bill mentioned in the SP. If you're looking at the SP document, we have section four, five, and six, which go into detail into architectural design standards, landscaping and parking, screening, and then it being a form-based code, have a build-to line rather than setbacks that we're developing too. This type of development specifically in the village center is going to feel different than what's been built around it. And specifically, we've built in additional design standards to make this an above and beyond what Galton requirements would be in wanting to make this a high-density walkable district. And the only thing that's been developed thus far, like Bill had said, there are a few roads, and then the park and ride stops. So we're trying to build off of that and make this what we would like to see happen, and some of those graphics that we have as examples. In order to do that, we need high density and a mixture of horizontal and vertical uses. If you look in detail in the architectural design standards, we've set standards for what the streetscape at the building level, where pedestrians enter into and out of, would look like. Bill touched on that there are several different types of streetscapes, applications like porches, stoops, and storefront. So we're envisioning a lively streetscape and trying to create something that would be a high-density walkable district. I've got a couple of examples that I'd like to share. Bill, do I just hit the share screen button at the bottom, and then that'll, y'all can see what I'm looking at?
I believe that would take, you would take over. That would be up to Jeff to assign you that.
Go ahead, April.
Okay, great. Thank you. Can you all see this image? It's a Google aerial.
Yes.
Okay. This is, let me get a minute. This is Norton Commons in Prospect, Kentucky, just outside of Louisville. And this was one of the example projects that's built that we were using as our inspiration when we designed the pattern book for Greensboro TRD. And as you can see, we've got on-street parking, lots of open space that's designed, that's pedestrian-friendly. You've got different types of style of architecture, mixture of uses on the main floor with a mixture of possible residential units above. The buildings are addressing the street. They come right up to the right-of-way. You've got several different types of fencing and low walls. Landscaping, addressing the street. You've got street furnishings. You've got lots of fenestration, which we actually have required above and beyond what the normal Galton code regulations would permit. Again, mixture of uses on corners, landscaping. So just to give you an example, this is one, as I pan through here. Another would be Market Commons in Arlington, Virginia. And again, if you look at the streetscape, we've got different types of pavement. We've got boulevards landscaped. We've got site furnishings within the pedestrian throughway. We've got stoops and lots of fenestration on the ground floor level. Mixture of buildings at the building liner. And then another example is in Besse, Besse, Maryland. This is another built project that's a TOD. Again, if you're looking at the streetscape, we're wanting to make it a lively, walkable, vibrant area is what we envision for the village center, which is the area that we're asking to include into the SP.
Is there any questions for April?
So this looks like it's a city within itself.
That's, yes. So that's the premise of what we're trying to create is something that would be unlike what's around it, a more dense, walkable, centered-around transit development.
Do we know what kind of transit to expect?
Currently, right now, it's a park-and-ride, which I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, it's a BRT. It's on a BRT line, which is Bus Rapid Transit, which means it's bus, but they have fewer stops in between, and it allows pedestrians to get to their destinations a little bit faster. But there is a park-and-ride for the BRT right now, and I think it was at one time, I think, planned that it could become transit-oriented in the far, far near future. Is that correct, Bill?
Yes, that's correct. The plan did show it's possible that at some future time that maybe a trolley or shuttle of some sort could go the length of Greenlee Boulevard and possibly Nashville Pike and connect into the college.
These are very pretty places, but I don't see any eight-story buildings. What would be in those eight-story buildings?
You would have a mixture of, if you, if you look at the chart that we have in the SP, there's several different types of uses, and we're trying to leave it open so that when development happens, we're not saying, okay, that it has to be this, or it has to be that. I could see a mixture of business, retail, commercial with some residential on the top three to five stories. So you're, and you could even have a building liner, so your store is on the, on the streetscape edge with parking, a parking garage behind, and then apartments wrapping that. So it could be a mixture of different types of uses in that eight stories. But that would mostly be what's along the Boulevard, not the entire 47 acres that we're asking to add to this.
Chief Williams, does our fire department have the means to keep an eight-story building safe?
I don't think Chief's here, but I think Robert Ritchie's here.
Chief Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am. We should be able to. We've got a ladder two. It's 75-foot tall, 75-foot length. And the ladder truck uptown, the tandem axle job, it's 100-foot.
April, as you know, of course, here in the last few months, of course, we've got hammered pretty hard as far as the city council concerned on apartments and things, and of course, all the comments and stuff right here. And I know, you know, part of this property is already zoned to put apartments and stuff on it, but everybody's thinking that because we changed this, that we're going to go and put, you know, 500 apartments on this piece of property.
So you're saying, just making a statement, that apartments are everyone's main concern, is what I'm hearing?
Yes, because folks nowadays, because we have so many recently, you know, they're all against us approving any apartments.
I will say this, that the SP, if a part, if it's the style apartments that you're concerned about that are similar to what we would call traditional garden-style apartments, that, that's an example of what's already there is the Edison. This SP would not permit something like the Edison to be developed here because of the parking requirements, the architectural style requirements, the streetscape, build-to-line requirements. This would look and feel different than what you're thinking of a traditional garden-style apartment would feel like.
So there's, so there's a chance that could be condominiums or something else over top of this retail, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think people are also concerned about the number of cars being added to our traffic and kids in schools and et cetera, so.
If I might interject, if I might interject here, Councilman Love, this is James Fenton, Economic Development. First, we need to realize that this is what was originally planned for this area, was approved many, many years ago. And the fact is that the design that they're bringing forward truly will reduce a lot of that traffic because it is a transit-oriented development. And the fact is, if we allow some of this more dense development, it reduces the city's long-term liabilities. And I'm speaking about a road in particular. And Dustin out of our planning department just had a great article published that expresses that and talks about the cost of the long-term liability for roads and those kind of things. This kind of development reduces that liability for the city long-term. And I think that's one of the things we need to look at. What they're talking about now truly does develop hubs where our citizens and, and I think we need to remember that over the last five years, we've been growing at an average of 183 people a month. Okay, and that, that growth is not going to slow down. What we need to do as a city, my opinion, is make sure that developments that we're approving allow for less traffic, allow for that more dense development with the multi-use to happen there in the area so that they aren't all having to drive everywhere to get what they need. And I think this is one of the few developments that have come in front of this board, this body, that truly moves forward the original vision that was placed out there upon this. And I know, I know that multifamily is a, is a bad word right now, but there are areas, and that is appropriate. And I think this is one of them. And I would, I would just ask that there be support for this. It's hard for everybody to support it. I understand that, but this is a development that will create a hub in our community that makes us ready for that transit-oriented development into the city. And so please give this due thought. Thank you.
So, Mr. Overton, I have one question.
Go ahead, Mr. Alexander.
From this April. I noticing your development, any of your development in any city have any bike lanes in it?
Say your question again.
Do any of your development in any of the city have any bike lanes for bicycles?
In their transit-oriented development?
Yes.
Yes, sir. That's, that's one of the key components to creating these is that you add bike lanes. I know I'm not showing any on here. They're probably understood in this particular development. But yes, in the, in our SP as well, we have accounted for bike lanes and will, once we move forward with design.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much.
I understand this completely. So we've already been, most of this has already been approved for this type of development, and the, or, and the only part we're really concerned about right now is that small area that, what I understood Bill to say was supposed to be box stores and not development. Is that right? Are we, I mean, this, this little development is, is already approved? And we're just adding a little bit to it?
Mr. Chairman, may I interject and ask a question, Mr. McCord, that I think will help?
Yes, Mayor.
Yeah, I was, I was going to ask Mr. Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask Mr. McCord if he would go back because this plan predates so many of us, we weren't exposed to it when it was approved, and those of you who were here have probably forgotten. So I think it'd be helpful if Mr. McCord went back over that northern portion and maybe a brief overview of the whole development to explain what was actually approved because...
I have a question real quick before we start.
Good, Ms. Fan.
What percentage is retail, what percentage is residences, and what percentage of this property is gonna be open space? Is it broken down anyway?
I can answer part of that. I think twenty percent minimum, and I'd have to go back in the document, is slated to be open space, and that's for the whole development. After that, the breakdown is really based on the bulk standards and the uses that come in. We've set permitted and non-permitted uses for each sub-district, and it's really flexible in that sense to allow developments to have a mixture, again, horizontal and vertical mixes to create the vibrancy that we're trying to create and the density that we're trying to create.
Do you have any LOIs for this, for this community already?
I do not.
Do you know if, do you know if there is any?
I can't speak to that, to be honest.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. McCord. Mayor wanted you to review something for us.
Okay, this is the slide I showed earlier, which shows the existing approved portion of the properties to the north. And so, again, this is a wedge of property south of the CSX railroads on the north side, Greenlee Boulevard bisects the property, the Gap warehouse facilities on the east side, Volunteer States on the southeast side, and then St. Blais Road forms the north or southwest side of the property. So you may be familiar with the large, it's bean field or cornfields over the last few years that's out there now. So with the exception of the road that they built connecting St. Blais Road and Little Drive to Enterprise Drive, and the park and ride lot for the transit lines that provide express service to Nashville, nothing else has been developed out there. They did do some drainage improvements a few years ago in association with some flood control improvements. And I believe they removed or added some material in areas down in the forty-something acres, that was just land disturbance activity. So, yes, they are wanting to add this forty-seven acres to the south of it, and again, it's undeveloped property right now.
So, so let me, let me, let me just for, for the public's understanding, no matter if we approve this little pie-shaped piece of property or not, they can build what they want to build on that property that's already zoned right now.
Well, it's zoned MRO PUD, and the PUD is pretty generous, it allows for a wide variety of uses, and that was approved years ago. The, yeah, and this is the slide that shows what was most recently approved was the master plan for this large, over million square foot shopping center. Now, that was approved in two thousand and seven, I believe, and the master plan, since nothing has been approved or built on there, no final master development plan has been approved, that is lapsed, so that would need to come back for approval if they wanted to build a big shopping center. But I think most of us realize that the economic vitality and things changed in those fifteen years or so, they don't do that anymore. So it would be a waste to essentially expect something that is in the gone-by days to be developed out there. But we need to find a more lucrative use for these properties.
Bill, make sure you talk about the multifamily and the design for those buildings, and I don't know if you have immediate access to the number of units, because I honestly have no clue what the number of units is.
I don't think it identified in the plan a specific number, a maximum number of units. As April described, it's a form-based code, so they didn't get into the details of intricate number of units. They did identify the types of units they would allow in different parts of the development. Let me see.
Bill, if I may interject here, on page twenty-five of the SP document, this is in the section three bulk standards where we describe the blocks for Village, Village Center, Village and Village Edge. At the bottom of the page, it gives you dwelling units per acre, minimum and maximum, and that's standard density to support a TOD. And we did extensive research before we even quoted any of this in our booklet, but for Village Center, it's a minimum of twelve dwelling units per acre to a required maximum of forty dwelling units per acre. And that, that can get really intense, and that's why we were asking for a maximum stories of eight in the Village Center to be able to get up to that forty. Transit has to have a certain amount of density in order for it to function correctly, and that's, that's why we put that minimum and maximum in there for that Village Center to give us the flexibility to have different mixtures of uses, horizontal and vertical. If you look at the Village, it's a minimum of seven and a maximum of thirty. And then the Village Edge, which is our most residential-like sub-district, it's a minimum of five dwelling units to a maximum of fifteen. So we're looking at very tight build-tos, side setbacks, you know, multiple stories to allow us to get to the density needed to have this be a functioning transit-oriented development.
So, back to my question.
Hello, Ms. Love.
Are we voting just on this added little triangle of land tonight, now, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we've, we've already voted. We've already passed it on first reading, so I think it's automatically going to second reading next week. We're not gonna vote on anything tonight, we just want it back on our committee meeting just so we could see.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said voted, but all the rest of it is already approved, we would just, are considering that one triangle.
That's correct.
So why do we need, why not let them build the, what they can already, and then see how, see how, you know, we like it, and then approve another little triangle there?
That's a question from Mr. McCord or April?
Well, they, they proposed to build this phase, forty-seven acres, in their third phase, so they will be building the properties up to the north first. They, they want some sort of assurance that, you know, they're not gonna be stuck with the big box, or if they come back with a big box to get re-approved, I suppose that y'all would approve that. That, that, I think, I can tell you right now, just from experience, that the big-box shopping center will generate a lot more trips than the mixed-use residential and commercial development that they...
More traffic.
This is just something totally new for Gallatin and...
Oh, yes, it's, but this is the trend. I want to stress that these, this is what's gonna happen, this is a plan for the future, not a plan for today necessarily. It's a plan for the long term and the future, but when me and you and all the rest of the council are gone, this is gonna be the development pattern. You see this in all of the satellite cities of large cities, so Atlanta, Indianapolis, Louisville is the example that we saw here. This is really what's being, it's occurring in Lebanon, it's occurring in Murfreesboro, Franklin, so...
And this transit parking lot's already built, there, it's already currently being used.
Yeah, the bus runs to and from Nashville each day.
I just want everybody to remember that. We built that several years ago. We all partnered with that thing and had it built several years ago, so that parking lot and the transit parking lot's already built.
It is going to be a lot of years before there is more, before any, what I would call real transit is in place. We're not gonna have a train. At best, we might have Bus Rapid Transit, that'd be a dedicated lane thing. I don't, I mean, and I think autonomous vehicles will come before that, and I don't know how this will play out, that it will ever even make sense for Nashville or for the region to look at putting in transit once autonomy happens. You know, we're, it's not twenty years ago where you could look ahead and know how congestion would progress because you have technology that's coming into play, and I think that we will see a lot of technology really impacting our travel. Hopefully, we're gonna have some technology impacting our travel within Gallatin soon we get the ITS done in there. But I just don't know. Somebody's tired.
My mic's open and you're yawning, so. I think it's Mr. Alexander.
Why would it be me?
I know that I am boring. But I just say, it's not, gosh, it's not, it's not realistic to think something that's gonna happen in ten years because it's, I mean, look at the state of Tennessee, they're not gonna fund that in those years. And before any transit happens to any of the outline areas, there would have to be some interconnectivity in downtown Nashville, and, and I say it several years before they even attempt that again, and then it has to be built. So we're talking...
Ms. Love?
Not in my lifetime.
So Paige has kind of proven my point. I mean, we've already got things that are coming up that were rezoned fourteen years ago, and, and they're, we're not really thrilled about the way they were zoned at that time, so why, if it's gonna be years and years before they do anything with it, why go ahead and rezone it now?
I was just speaking to the transit piece of it. I'm not saying that this kind of development, I'm not speaking as to the wisdom of this type of development, because this type of development is consistent with what you're seeing all over the area, but, you know, we're wrestling with our, our growing population and demands happening all over the community for this kind of development. And, and, you know, we, we could plan so much better as a city if we knew the time, if we could guarantee the timelines in which stuff would be completed, but we can't. All we can do is say, yes, this will be allowed here, and it means this year or sometime in the next many years. And so that's why we have such a challenge at this point, because we're typically in Gallatin, for so many decades, things would get approved, and then it'd take years to get the financing in place, then it would take years to build it. Well, what we're seeing now, because we're in such a hot region, people come in here, they get something approved, they start building, and then all of a sudden, we have, you know, this many new housing units, and that's why we have grown so fast. But, I mean, again, we're not, we're not growing except in an exceptional way compared to any other city in the region, everybody's experiencing this. As long as you've got people moving here from states where they live, this is the, this is what we're trying to navigate.
Any other questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I gotta comment. The truth is, is if we don't have this type of development, we're gonna be behind, we're not gonna be the desirable city that I think we're gonna be in the future. So if we don't keep up, we're gonna get left behind. I don't necessarily like growth that much, but the truth is, it's kind of...
Thank you, Mr. Fan, anybody else?
Yeah, again, we're just, we would just be adding this small area.
That's correct.
Already there.
Correct. Go ahead, Mr. Fennel.
I was just gonna point out that I want our city to be a little bit different. I don't like to be in similar to Louisville or Indianapolis or any of the other large cities in, and I would like to have our own little flavor to what we can add, it would be nice.
I agree.
I step in here, again, James Fenton's...
Go ahead, Mr. Fan.
Mr. Fennel, I agree with you, one hundred percent, and this is one of those things that I think can differentiate us from other places. If we allow these small communities to develop and create that density to where we can start to attract the food service, the, you know, the restaurants that we want to have, all those other things that our constituents, your constituents are asking for. You get those calls. You, you know how many people would like to have a nice restaurant, would like to have all those things out there, and this type of development, Mr. Fennel, I truly believe will help encourage those kinds of developments.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton, anyone else? This will be on our agenda next week. Let's move on to item number three. Mr. McCord and Nick Tull.
This is item number three, this is a request for multimodal grant. You approved a resolution that will allow us to apply for the grant last summer. This grant would be for the purpose of building a trail, multimodal trail, which is essentially a very wide sidewalk similar to our greenway on the east side of town in front of Ball State Community College. We applied for this grant last year with TDOT, and we're, we're not accepted, so we're asking to, we asked you to apply, allow us to apply again, and we have, and we were told by TDOT to submit an application. So it's this segment here on the map that's shown on your screen, I hope everybody can see that.
What kind of money be associated with it, Mr.?
It's, it's a ninety-five, five percent grant, so TDOT would be covering the ninety-five part, and we'd be covering the five percent, which would be fifty thousand, and right now, we're estimating that about a million-dollar project, so they would cover ninety, nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars at that.
Is there a motion, Mr. Council?
Are you just asking our permission?
Yes.
To apply for the grant?
Resolution that you would approve next week.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we send it on to council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made properly second, any other discussion? Ms. Kettrell, we call the roll to send it on to council.
Vice Mayor Camp? Vice Mayor Camp? I don't see him. No, he's here. Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennel?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Item number four. Ms. Rachel Nichols.
Yes, sir, before using ordinance to appropriate the capital projects for the utility department for this fiscal year, when budgets were prepared and presented earlier in the year, these items were not entered into munis, which is how we generate our report for the budget ordinance. They had been presented in the five-year capital plan, but they just weren't entered into munis, and this is simply to get those projects on the books and appropriated.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made properly second, any further discussion? Ms. Kettrell, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Camp?
He is having technical difficulties.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yes.
Councilman Fennel?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Six I's, zero N's.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. Item number five, monthly financial reports, Ms. Rachel Nichols.
Yes, sir, in the packet are the financial reports for May through August. I apologize for May's not being presented earlier, I thought I had, and when I looked to prepare these, after all of the year-end entries were made, I realized I'd left May off earlier, but now that the year has been closed and the audit... These are the reports for May, June, July, and August.
Ms. Nichols, you wanna just real quickly highlight something on them for the public's knowledge?
I'll be glad to. For the year ending June thirtieth, on the general fund, our year-to-date revenues were exceeded by our year-to-date expenditures by a million seven, but that includes our depreciation cost. So overall, we had a good year. We had planned to go into our fund reserve sum, and we did. Again, we had a good year, even with the COVID. Again, we had a good year, even with the COVID activities. Lowered revenues at the golf course civic center for programs that were canceled. But, um, also departments did a good job of holding their costs down once that occurred. The other funds also performed well for the year. Happy to report that the stormwater fund, the stormwater fees that are collected covers their expenses. That's not something that the general fund has to subsidize, so to speak. So they're doing well, um, as is the environmental services fund. I know they had quite a bit of more collections where everyone was staying home instead of going to their workplaces. And so they've had a lot more residential pickup during the COVID. And even with that, their revenues have, um, kept pace with their expenses.
So Ms. Nichols, we hear it all the time, how bad we're in, how bad a shape we're financially, we're in from a lot of folks. But you're, you're telling us that we're in great financial shape and, um, we just need to keep on doing what we're doing and watch what we're spending. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. For years, we have been very conservative with our presentations. The, the budgets that I present and that I recommend to the mayors over the years have been very conservative. And it has done us well over the years. We are in a good position to get through this pandemic. Hopefully it will not go on for an extended period of time, but at the moment, we are holding our own very well.
Thank you very, very much. That's good news.
Thank you.
That is.
At this time, any other business that anybody would like to discuss? Mayor, I got a question. Are we going to meet, uh, remotely next week or are we in person next Tuesday?
That, that was what I was going to bring up to you all because, um, we are currently under a good notarial executive orders that only allow us to meet through the end of October. It is my understanding that there is a new executive order that's supposed to be coming down that will allow us to meet virtually, will allow anyone to meet virtually through the end of the year. But it's Tuesday, our next meeting is next Tuesday, and that order has not come down yet. So I was going to ask this council if they want to consider it and make a decision based upon, if that order does, you know, appear. We do have to be aware that we do have those dangerous building hearings next week. And those people have been asked to come to the building. So we will make sure that we are here and accommodate those people if they do come to the building, should you decide to continue virtually.
What's the will of the body?
I say continue virtually.
That's one. Anybody else?
If allowed.
If allowed.
So how, will we know on Tuesday what?
We'll know before, yeah, we'll have to meet in person.
I, I suspect that they will, um, um, come down in the next couple of days since we're approaching the end of the month.
So what's your, what's your will, Ms. Love?
I'm okay with whatever y'all decide. I'm fine doing it virtually if other people are too.
Mr. Fain?
I'm on the fence. It doesn't matter.
Mr. Alexander?
Only thing I'm concerned about is we meet face to face. I hope we have some kind of shield to, you know, be on the safe side and wear a mask. We don't want to preach one thing, practice something else.
Mr. Camp?
I will say that it seems like we're reaching more people doing it virtually since we have it open by phone and Zoom meetings too.
We need to make a decision. Somebody needs to.
I said virtual.
That, is that a motion to do it if the executive order comes out?
Yes, sir.
You all, um, if that is a motion, do you want to set a date for us to plan to continue those meetings through at this point? Or do you want to take it week to week?
I mean, we can do it. If it says the, we'll just, we'll follow the executive order. If it says through the end of the year, we'll do it through the end of the year.
Is there a second to that motion?
I mean, realistically, we'll probably only have five more meetings or six, so.
Is there a second to that motion?
I think Steve Fain started to say something.
Steve, did you say something?
Why can't we do both? If they want to show up, let them show up. If they want to stay home, let them stay home.
Well, you're, you're seeing how it is to accommodate, um, just two people in council. We would essentially have to have computers and headsets for any member of the public that wanted to participate in person.
Then I'll second virtual.
Sounds like it's going to be easier on our staff if we do it virtually as long as we can.
He seconded it.
I second.
Correct, Mayor?
I mean, we are prepared to meet in person. We have provisions that we plan to install. We are, we do not have all of the technology that we have ordered to accommodate, um, in-person meetings and be able to spread people throughout the building so that the chambers didn't get too crowded if much people were to show up. But.
I think Steve seconded it.
I understand that, Mr. Hayes, but the mayor's talking right now.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know if she heard him or not. I'm sorry.
She did.
I, I just wanted to say that, um, in, in, um, in response to Mr. Fain's comment. So, and we, we could do it, but, uh, I mean, I'm giving you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Kitter, call the road, please.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fain.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes, but I won't be here.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you.
I have, I have one, one question, uh, I need to address the mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
Do we need to meet on election night?
Well.
I mean, but if it's important, I guess we do have to, I'm just.
We've kind of gotten ourselves, we brought it up, uh, um, you know, a month or six weeks ago because, um, when we made that determination to have those dangerous building hearings on that night, we had sent public notices to those people. I mean, we sent notices to those people if they had to appear on that. And we can't pull that back at this point. So we're bound by that action. I think, Ms. Hamacali, you may.
Yes, we are. And I asked that question and everyone said they wanted to meet that night.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so it sounds like we're doing this. Any other business anybody has?
This isn't business really, but I, I've been asked what times and what days that this meet, these meetings are reshown on TV on cable. And I didn't know the answer to that.
Mr. Henshaw could answer that for us.
On cable, we're just live. We archive on our website, um, long-term archive on YouTube. And, uh, we archive on Facebook as well.
Oh, people had told me that they used to see it during the week, so that's.
Long time ago they did.
We stopped, yeah, we stopped doing that a long time ago, about several years ago.
Yeah, we did. We. Anything else, anybody? Any department head?
Uh, yes, Councilman Overton. Just wanted to update the council that, uh, we've been working with the Rotary Club to fulfill our obligations with honor core of engineers on.
I saw y'all down there working.
Yeah, the tree restoration down at Liberty Branch Park. So, uh, we completed that work today and we're just going to keep the trees alive for a couple of years. We've fulfilled our obligation to the core on that.
Just keep the Rotary guys out there and don't let them cut them anymore.
No comment.
Anybody else have anything, any other department head?
Councilman Overton, I, I just wanted to update the council. I was asked to research about a gas tax at the last work session. I did research that. There is no authority for us to institute our own gas tax. There is a state tax. Municipalities do receive funding from that. I have an article from M T A S, uh, that I will send to email to those of you that have an email uh, that sets out the funding, um, the way that we get funded, it's fairly complicated. I did talk with Rachel Nichols and she says that we get approximately over a million dollars a year from that gas tax.
Thank you, Ms. Susan.
Do you know what percentage we get?
We get, uh, fourteen point three eight percent of the first eleven cents. It's a very complicated.
I'm sure.
Formula.
When you say we have no authority, is there a way to get an authority?
Through the legislature being on the way, right, Susan?
That's correct. You can go to your, uh, legislators and ask for an, you know, that we have some type of exemption, exemption that we could institute our own tax. Otherwise, unless the state gives us authority to institute a tax, we have no authority to do so.
It's about like what they done on the hotel motel tax. Steve, they give us permission to do it ourselves and we done it here, so.
There is a statute on that that allows that.
It's about the only tax I approve of because it's on a use basis and people coming into town also have to pay it. If they're using their roads, they're paying for it. Of course, if we got started here, it probably gets started statewide. Once they seen the revenue, you'd bring in.
Anybody else? Mr. McCord, I want to say thank you for your office. We had several, several signs on the right of ways and they weren't too pretty. So, I mean, there's still people going right back behind and putting them back up. But anyway, you got most of them off and I appreciate it. Uh, I just hate it that people complain because we put them up or, or the council that's running puts them up and then somebody goes back behind them and puts them back up. So, but I appreciate your office for.
Oh, I have not put any up. I want to clarify that.
I understand that, Mr. Fennell. I was speaking about you.
Um, Ms. Overton, I have one more thing. Um, one thing Ms. Hamacali said reminded me of something, and I don't know if she wants to help me address that this, address this at this time or not, but we do need to bring it up with this council. Do you want to talk about email addresses, Ms. Hamacali?
Sure, if you would like for me to do that, I can, uh, do that now. As you know, uh, we've discussed in prior meetings that each council member should have, our I T directors talked about it in the past, should have a city email. And we are running into issues because some council members do not have a city email. When we get records requests, we are required to search your email. If you do not have a city email and you're using your personal email for city business, you're going to need to give the city permission to come and search your email. It's a liability to the city for those of you that are conducting business other than by city email if you're using email. So I just wanted to, uh, the mayor and I have discussed that. I need to remind the council of that, that it is a liability. We are required by state law when we get records requests that ask for emails to search emails. So I suggest everyone of the council members, I know that you've all been assigned a city email and that you use that email and only that email to conduct city business.
Suzie, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
If someone comes in and asks for public records requests, say on emails, that's actually costing us money, correct? Because we have to take time away from duties to look that up and research it.
Well, it's required by state law. If someone files the records request, that we are required by state law to conduct that search.
Well, what he's saying is it costs us a lot of money to do that time and everything, correct, Susan?
Yes, it takes, you know, city resources to do that. Yes, it does.
So we, we can, you guys keep a record of like who, uh, asked for that and how much time is spent and how much money it's costing the taxpayers?
Well, I think that depends when, we can only charge if we get copies. Uh, I mean, when a request is made for copies, you can only charge for your labor at that point. So it's, has been the city's policy when copies are requested, that whomever does the, the search keeps track of that. When there's a request to inspect, I can't say that we keep up with that, that we keep up with the time for that because we are not allowed by law to charge for inspection.
But I hope we're keeping up with it because there's, I mean, there's some folks that ask for a lot of requests. And I would, I mean, I think all of us would love to know how much time our city employees are spending on some of these requests that they're asking for.
I think Jimmy, I think this actually, I think he has kept up with some of it. I think some of that is out there in the public.
Anything else, any other department heads? Seeing none, is there a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye. See y'all next week.
Bye, y'all.
Bye.